Second, twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Motion by Eric, second by Mike. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is a consent agenda. Too many board members wish to remove a consent item for individual consideration. None were approving the minutes for the Board of Education meeting on January eighth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of receipts and expenditures for December of twenty twenty-three. And approval acceptance of community donations. Joanne and David Babler, fifty dollars to the backpack buddies. Entertained a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Jim. By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item is public comment. We have nobody signed up for public comment. No old business, now on to new business. Got an informational item. And discuss the high school softball team trip to Tennessee. And I think Mr. Jackson is here to give us some commentary and background on that.
That gave me a little bit. Hopefully some was in the write-up. It's the trip they do every year. People are not really able to, they used to go to Florida. And it's basically going to jump on the season to get better weather, to get some more competition. Usually get several days of good games in and some good weather. Last year they switched it to Tennessee and had a relevant experience. So it's something that the girls fundraiser is for, to go to the trip. To play and get that extra jump on the season, like I said. And then a lot of the families do choose to go and the coaches go as well. So it's just a really good experience for them.
Awesome. Does the entire team go?
Varsity and some reserves, so no, not the entire teams.
Any additional questions? Administration comments from the board?
Sir, Austin, how's that covered? If there was a write-up, it's not in our documents that I see, so.
Girls themselves fundraising and a softball team fundraising. So there is a cost for each individual girl, but they try to cover it mostly through fundraising through the year. And not every girl is required to do it.
There was no write-up submitted.
Good question. Any additional questions? All right. Thank you. Move on to item B. Item B is the approval of elementary math resources. So this is an item that was brought to the curriculum committee and discussed and approved there. And then brought to finance this evening and then approved there this evening. And now to the full board for consideration. Todd and his team went through a pretty detailed presentation, both at curriculum and then a little bit in finance this evening. So if anybody has any questions for Todd on this item, or if you'd like to add anything before we consider it. Feel free.
Budget question. Does this replace something that was already in the budget? Is this new? Is this something you had already figured in, Ron?
Oh, for the, I'm sorry, if you ask all the math resources? That's basically something that was planned in with the curriculum cycle. And so Todd will be spending it all within this year and use up this year's budget on that. Because some of the LE costs came in less this year. So then it forwards this and gets, helps us probably save some dollars in next year's budget.
And I'll just go back. So, yeah, because we haven't, we haven't talked about that and we talked a little bit about it at curriculum. But every year you have a budget for curriculum. And so we cycle through different areas and there's a plan, like a five-year plan of what areas are going to be looked at each year and how they evaluate them. Then that just, yeah, it's part of the budget. It's a good question.
And with the approval this evening, that'll speed up acquisition of the curriculum. And then planning for the professional development to begin. Which day?
June third.
June third.
That's the target date, yep.
Any additional questions? Comments, discussion? Entertain a motion. Motion would be to purchase all necessary resources for adoption of the Bridges Math Program at a cost of ninety-eight thousand to be paid from the twenty-three, twenty-four curriculum budget as recommended by the curriculum and finance committees.
So moved.
A second.
Motion by Terry, second by Teresa. Further discussion or questions? By voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. All right. We are on to item C. So this is going to be our discussion of the MHS building project. And again, tonight, we have our project team here with us. They'll also be with us for the community information session on Wednesday at Monroe High School Performing Arts Center at seven P.M. This is the same information that'll be provided to the community that night. And the board's opportunity to provide feedback in advance of the event. I know that the project team's excited to share the progress with us made over the last few weeks after we met last time. How to bring the project estimates within budget for the referendum. Jesse Duff with Fairgram is here tonight. He'll present the site plan draft and any updates to traffic study or DNR permitting that he's received since the last two weeks, if there are any to present. And then we'll have Dan and Todd is here tonight from CG Schmidt. They'll present the summary budget as compared to the estimates being used to calibrate the bid packages before they go out. And we've also asked him to provide some color and some context around the bidding process and how local indoor union and non-union companies can engage in that competitive bidding process. And their presentation is attached to your board packets. And then we have Michael here with Plunkett Racing Architects. They'll, he's going to walk us through three-D renders and fly around of the proposed building and commons. And so as a reminder, Jeremy and his individual teams and stakeholders have, at the high school, have had opportunities to work through their each respective two-day, two-D floor plans to inform the overall project. But this would be the first look at renders and site plan as a whole to the entire community as we lead up to the presentation this Wednesday. And then, as always, we've got Mike in the back there. We pay Mike to worry and he's here to worry for us and give us some color and content, context around what we're talking about tonight. So with that, we're gonna kick it off and hand it over to Jesse.
Thanks. Jesse, up with Fairgram is, as Richard stated, just here to give you an update on the site. It's changed quite a bit since the initial concept that was put out. And the main reason for that is to better fit the site and the natural topography of the site and to take advantage of the site. What you see in front of you is a colored rendering with the main high school building in the center, which you're seeing in the room. Just to tell you a little bit about that first. The front entrance, their main entrance is on the west side. There is a large corridor that stretches through the entire building, which Michael will go into more detail about. CTE, CTE area is in the southwest. The gym is in the southeast. The PAC and music department is in the northeast. And then we have an education wing in the northwest. Looking at the overall site, you can see that with the main entrance being on the, on the west side, we do have a drop-off area at the front with staff and student parking on the north and the south. We also have a large student and staff parking as well as events on the north side, which coincide well with the main entrance to where the football stadium would be. The building is placed on the center, roughly the center of the, of the site, which is follows along a natural ridge line that comes from the northwest to the southeast. And we did that to take advantage of the topography and to put the building in mainly a cut situation with bills on the outside. That helps to make sure that we have a strong foundation underneath of our, our new school. There is an entrance off of Thirty-first Avenue. This will not be the main entrance. The main entrance will be off of KK, which we'll talk about later. But this will be more of a secondary entrance. We do have a drop-off area on the south, which will be for buses as well as staff parking, as well as serve a purpose for tennis courts, which you see here for visitors and spectators of that. As we look at the overall site, we have our baseball, softball complex over in the southwest area. We have the varsity field in the northeast, varsity baseball, varsity softball, practice softball, practice baseball, with a concession stand area in the, in the center, which future restrooms, concessions. We also have some batting cages around the outside, as well as the main entrance, an entrance up to the facility from one of the main parking areas. We also do have on the, on the football field, this field sits roughly fifteen feet lower than what the first floor of the building would be, which allows for a very neat stadium. It would be a top load bleacher system. And so you'd be, as you come out in the concession area, commons area, you'll be able to look down over top of the football field. The football field is, is planned for an artificial turf with the full track facilities. So we have a full eight-lane track with nine lanes along the hundred-yard dash, hundred-meter. We also have triple jump, long jump attached on the east side of the track facility as well as pole vault. We have discus as well as shot put. Then we also have two practice football slash soccer fields, which are both oriented north-south. Also, what you see on the site in the red are some maintenance utility buildings. We have a greenhouse up in this area, which is, is maybe a more of a future planning, but we make sure to incorporate that. We have a track house. We have our press box, which will likely grow as we look at concessions. And then we also have a maintenance area down next to the, to the tennis courts, just off of the up of this, this parking area here. That allows for good access for, for maintenance, mowing, et cetera. Also, on the south side of the building is we have what we call backup house. This is where you will have loading and unloading for your cafeteria, as well as the dumpster locations, which is nice because it's on the south side. Not mainly where all your main entrances are, but it also separates any deliveries from main student traffic areas. I'll go ahead and pause and just see if anybody has any questions.
Jesse, is there concessions planned for the football field area?
Yeah, so that would be up here on this main concrete area. We've allowed plenty of space for it right now, but we haven't detailed the size of that yet. So we plan on concessions on the lower level here, right outside of that main entrance.
And restrooms?
Restrooms as well.
And restroom, oh, sorry.
That may be future. What it does allow with this setup is that we can actually utilize the interior corridor as well to, in the meantime, until we construct that concession and restrooms.
And there's also restrooms by the baseball diamonds?
Yes. Plan for restrooms, concessions as well as storage areas. You can also see in these lighter color brown, these are detention facilities that are sized in order to meet the DNR and city of Monroe, state and local regulations. So we have, we have four, four different detention areas. And that was because we have to follow the natural flows of the water. And we're only allowed to release what was going there previously. And we even take it from a hundred-year storm down to a ten-year storm, so that we're not releasing more onto the neighbor's site than what was currently going there. I know that can be a question sometimes with downstream neighbors worried about, we're gonna cause more water problems than what's there. But it actually takes it the opposite direction, releases less than what there would be now during a hundred-year storm. You can see this area here, which shows the aerial, that is a wetland area that we avoided. And we stayed on it so that we wouldn't have to disturb any of the natural wetlands down in this area.
Jesse, two questions for me. Is there, like, what share of the total square footage or gross square footage, I guess, of the building would be actual classroom space, just roughly speaking?
I'm gonna leave that for Michael, so when he gets into.
Thanks.
When he gets into the building.
Okay, you have a second question then. So you see that, it's like a courtyard, that kind of slot that comes down from, like, what's the purpose of that?
In this area?
Yeah.
It's in order to allow windows in the classrooms. Pretty easiest way to say it unless you want to go ahead and add more.
It sounded good.
So the, the more, the more exterior surface you can get, you can get the windows in order for each classroom to have, have a window out of you.
So are we only having bleachers on the one side of the football field?
That is correct.
Okay, and is it, like, much bigger than what we have already?
So it's two thousand three hundred and fifty seats, so it is bigger than what you currently have.
Okay, so what do we?
Visitor and, and home site combined, this would be more than what you currently have.
What do we currently have, just out of curiosity?
I have to look back. I did ask Jeff. You come to remember.
I thought it was like twenty-one hundred, but I.
So this is like.
Kind of both sides. Yeah, that both sides.
To get, right, couldn't get together. And I was gonna ask, I was gonna ask the same question, but also with parking too. How, how does this compare to what we currently have for parking?
So this current layout, layout has around seven hundred and fifty. And I believe your current one is around four hundred.
And then I'm trying to watch patterns. So it looks like you have a delineated bus drop-off and pickup, like where buses will go?
Yep.
And that's all down there?
Yeah.
Away from the student traffic.
And, and will, and then do delineate student and staff parking?
So we didn't separate, separate where students and staff would at this time.
Right, and you have a dedicated parent, you have a spot for parents to drop off and pick up?
Right up front.
So we allow for drop-off right up in this area.
Perfect.
Yep. And then your buses will be drop-off here. There's an access route right up to the school here, which also comes out for your sports facilities. So that, and you'll see later, there's some locker rooms down here, which is a direct access to the sports facilities, so.
As you all know, and it's just normal for us now, is we do a lot of street parking for day-to-day stuff and for events, so that's not gonna be here. So we need more spots.
For sure.
And we've also, there's a, there's a striping right along this north side of, of this lane, and that is to allow buses to park there. So we've accommodated fourteen or fifteen buses.
So we do our transfer.
Yep.
So can cars park down there too? Because I'm just wondering about handicap access to like the tennis courts and the baseball and softball fields.
Yes, so cars can park down in this area. Right now, we don't, we have not designated any handicap stalls down there. But we do have an access route to all of the track facilities for handicap, so.
And same for, do you have softball, baseball also?
Yeah, and so the softball, baseball handicap, it will be ADA accessible up in this direction. There is handicap up in, up in this area. We could look at adding some handicap stalls down in this corner, which would give a, a much more direct access route.
Yeah, the reason I was asking is because that's a long way to go to the, to the tennis courts for someone in a wheelchair or walker or anything.
No, that's a good, that's a good idea. We can look at incorporating ADA handicap stalls here as well as in this corner.
And then you have a, you have a ramp kind of on that northwest or northeast section too coming out the parking lot?
Yeah, so what we have here is the ADA stalls, handicap stalls right here, which is with a direct access up. And that will probably be a lot of the main entrances as we get people parking here. They'll come up and then they can walk right up to the front, to the top of the stadium. There is also stairs that would happen right here on this entrance.
So as you know, like in our current field, we have a lot of people who like to stand too. And now you'll have a, a full patio up there looking down on the field.
Jesse, for the parking, I know the new city building requirements require all those islands. Is there an opportunity to apply for a variance? Or would there be a way for, for you to reconsider how the parking is set up, if we can get rid of those islands?
Yep, so we've taken that into, into account. City code requires one island every twelve stalls. And every hundred stalls, you have to have a median. And so that's actually how we set up the parking right now. But as we, when we submit for conditional use, we're actually going to apply for a variance to reduce the islands. It is a very big maintenance issue. We are taxpayers, right? And so we have to be cognizant of, of the dollars. And so there's a lot of money that goes into those islands with curb and gutter, as well as landscaping and issues with maintenance and snow removal. So we've set up the design so that if we do get the variance to remove the medians and, and about half of the islands, then we can simply pave through them and we've set the design up for that, so we don't have to redesign it. We can simply just pave through them.
Those islands, are they?
And remove a lot of that curb.
Design, are they grass or are they stone?
So right now, they are grass.
Does the city require that we irrigate, like, have irrigation for those?
Do not have to irrigate those, no.
That's.
But they are a lot of maintenance.
Yeah, in my experience, those end up ugly fast and they're a huge problem for snow plowing. Where, where do you anticipate putting snow in this design?
So we can put them all along the, the edges. We actually do have quite a bit of space on the outsides of the parking, as well as all along the bottoms near the stormwater ponds. A lot of times what I like to do is I like to do a curb cut at the ends of the drive aisles, so that way they can push the stalls in and then run them out the aisles down to the end. And then they don't have to go up and over a curb. So that's usually how we plan it once we get to the final details. So like in this case, we have drive aisles, we would do a curb cut up in this area so that they can push it and then push through in all directions.
Outside of the, the preserving the wetland, do you have any other, like, natural areas kind of sectioned off?
No, I would say not, not anything for, like, endangered species or anything like that. We don't have any, any of that on our site. There is a lot of grass on the site, though. There is a lot of open space. We're only about thirty-five percent impervious on the site, and a lot of that is because of the fields, as well as the topography. So there is a lot of fall on the site. And it's gonna, it, we're in Green County, we're gonna take advantage of that. It's gonna look pretty nice in the end, you know? It isn't gonna be just a flat school site. There may be times where you have to walk uphill a little bit, but that's, I think we're all kind of used to that in southern Wisconsin.
Jesse, I guess to expand a little bit on what Ruby asked, which is a good question, you know, is there space that is probably planned for lawn now? But, for example, if the ag department wanted to do food plots, you know, would there be adequate space for that kind of thing?
There would be some areas, especially up in, up in this area, which isn't necessarily being utilized at this, at this time. And it's more of a flatter area of by, by these existing holes. Definitely a spot up in there. Also around this greenhouse area, we could use, utilize some of that, as well as maybe along some of these edges. A lot of it is, is we did try to keep from any retaining walls to help keep costs down. So you, you do a level field and then you run it a four-to, four-to-one, we call it, so a twenty-five percent slope. That's a nice moveable slope, but that we use those grade changes and those separation between parking lots to make up that grade change, so that we don't have to spend the cost of a retaining wall.
Go back to parking lot, Jesse, but I, is there curb and gutter on the whole thing?
There is, and that is.
Another city requirement that we can ask for a variance on? Do we need it?
So that's a requirement by the city of Monroe. We do need it on the downstream sides, for sure, because we do have a lot of fall and we gotta make sure we can control that stormwater. The rest of the curb and gutter is mainly along what we call an integral sidewalk or a thickened edge sidewalk. So we actually use the sidewalk as the curb and gutter, so that we don't have to have sidewalk and curb and gutter. It helps with, with costs. And so there is a chance that we could remove some of it, but most of it, Mike, is all downhill. And so we would need it on the downstream sides. Now around the islands, if we got rid of those islands, we'd be able to eliminate all that curb and gutter, which really isn't serving a lot of purpose other than hold the material of that landscape island in.
And did you say in the baseball section, there is, there are bathrooms or that's a future thing?
No, there will be bathrooms.
Okay, but over by the football one, that one's a future thing possibly? So they would use inside?
Yes.
Because it's closer?
At, at, at the opening, that is what it would be, what we do, our planning, so that we can add restroom and concessions out on the top of the football field.
There were some things we did in the budget exercise to make sure that we made, we made our budget. And so the bathrooms will be stuffed in in that concession area, but not necessarily finished. So until they get done, until they're finished, we'll be able to use, we're set up to use the restrooms in the, the commons.
But there will be a concession area?
The concession area is planned in there, yes.
Concession and a press box.
Yeah, so you'll have all of your PAC, basketball, all being bathrooms and concessions would be literally just inside the building from that huge plaza. So you just walk inside, much like you do at some schools, and you're right there, so.
We've talked about, like, you know, potential future expandability. Can you just kind of point out visually for me where that, where that would be and?
Yep.
What that would look like?
It's actually what we've left down in this area.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Just for some expansion. And Michael, I believe you have some additional area off of this wing as well as CTE?
Yep, all those, this, this can, this is designed to be able to be enclosed over to here, so these two stairs will be connected. And then there's expansion for maybe a future Black Sox or something over here.
A future what? I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
So generally, all four corners are designed for expansion.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Jesse, you said something, thirty-five percent impervious is?
Impervious means hard surface, including building, yep.
Got it, so sixty-five percent is grass?
Yep.
Got it, thanks.
Grass or?
Fields, I mean, that would be fields.
None.
In those, the turf, the turf counts as impervious, I'm assuming, right?
Turf as well, yep, yep. So it's a term that we use when we're looking at stormwater or anything. And then, if you don't mind, go over to the next sheet. Connection to KK, probably something that everybody's had lots of questions about. It's, what we have here is, we do have the city street. It's a city curb and gutter down until we get to the edge of our site. And then we transition to a town road style with three-foot shoulders and ditch line. And this will be an asphalt paved connection. That's twenty-two feet wide. And just to put that in perspective, County Highway KK is twenty-two and a half feet wide. And then we have three-foot gravel shoulders on each side, so another six foot wide through this whole corridor. There is a stream crossing here, as well as a stream crossing here, in which we have done a box culvert. We designed a box culvert here and a double cell box culvert here. We have applied for wetland permit in order to cross both of these sections. And we just recently obtained our permits from the DNR as well as the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So we are approved for those two crossings. We've also submitted this to the county highway as well as the city engineer for review. And we've also taken into account the connection to KK. We looked at site distance as well as an intersection site distance. So there's a stopping site distance based on speed as well as an intersection site distance to make sure that we meet all DOT requirements for this access point. It is up the hill a little bit from radio lane. And if you are out there traveling it, you'll notice that there's actually a small crest of a hill, and that's right where we're targeting. That gives us the best visibility in both directions and meets our site distance rather than down by radio lane. When we get to radio lane, there's a small piece there where we were there, we wouldn't quite be able to see a small object. And so we moved it up the hill to get better visibility.
So is that site distance at least three hundred feet in both directions?
Yeah, it's like eight hundred and ninety. So, because we, we take it into account, three different types of vehicles, a passenger car, a straight truck, and a, a, a large semi. And then each of those have different site distances depending on the speed and which direction you're coming from. Because you have a left turn where you have to cross a lane versus a right turn where you don't have to cross a lane. So you have to have a longer site distance when you have to cross the lane to turn left.
Is there any sort of traffic control in those, maybe in that intersection?
Nope, so we did complete the traffic analysis for a few different intersections as all part of it that we worked with the city of Monroe on. We analyzed the intersection here as well as up at Thirty-first and Thirteenth, as well as up at Northside, as well as Six and a Half Street in front of the Justice Center, as well as the ramps up at Fifty-nine. I don't have the final report on that yet. It's being drafted. Um, I don't have the final report on that yet, it's being drafted, um, it's actually been drafted a few times, and, and, uh, it should be coming out for the final report. Um, but, uh, all intersections do function, uh, well, except for Thirteenth and Thirty-first. Uh, that is down by the beverage mart. Uh, and that one currently, right now, uh, functions at a, at a, uh, level of service of a D and an E, uh, currently. And so, uh, when we do look at the traffic generation for this, um, it does make that intersection a little bit worse. Uh, but we are, um, coming up with a, uh, solution there. Um, we ran it by the city and, and, uh, initial, uh, thoughts are to put a stop control at that intersection. Uh, when we do that, it does bring the level of service up to a C or better, um, under all circumstances. Um, so, traffic control is looking well, our traffic study is looking good, um, with some minor, uh, improvements in the area, so. But we did not have to do any turn lanes here, uh, the traffic here, and the site distance does not justify the need for, uh, any turn lanes.
Stop control, Jesse, is that just a stop sign, or like a four-way stop?
Four-way stop, yep.
So, no stoplights?
No stoplights, at this time, yep. So, it has to be approved by the city of Monroe as well, so it will be submitted, um, but we've had, um, a lot of preliminary discussions with them, uh, on it, and, and tried to keep them up to date on, on what we're doing and what our thoughts are, so.
Yes, the, the intersection, or the, the driveway on KK there, is that, is there enough distance where if, in the future, they ever want to make that a three-way stop, we can?
Uh, we would have to, we would probably have to reduce some speed, because that is fifty-five miles an hour. We do have the stopping site distance for it, um, but in order to justify the stop signs, uh, likely we would have, uh, a reduced, uh, speed in the future, but.
How long is that road?
Uh, I believe it's... You, you have it off the top of your head?
Two thousand, twenty-two hundred?
Yeah, something like that, yep.
No, the, the road to KK is longer than that. It's four thousand something. So.
I believe it's about four thousand, yeah.
Four, forty-six hundred, I thought it was around...
A mile.
Yeah.
Fifty-two eighty is a mile, so.
Jesse, that would be a two lane.
Just under.
Yes, yep. One lane in each direction, yep, twenty-two feet wide.
Does the district have authority to control speed on that?
Yes, so, it's planned on having, um, posted at twenty-five miles an hour, but it's designed for thirty-five. We have had discussions of putting in some traffic calming devices, uh, such as a tabletop, uh, instead of a, like a speed bump, we call it a tabletop, where it has larger ramps and a flatter area before coming down. Um, you've seen those a lot at, uh, crossings, um, like at a sidewalk crossing, um, for pedestrians. Uh, we do have some horizontal curbs, where we had to beander back and forth, um, and we did that to help, uh, uh, we call it a, a traffic calming. Um, helps keep people from making a, a, a straightaway and, and speeding down along that area.
Four, forty-eight hundred feet?
Forty-eight.
That would be dedicated to the city after construction, so that would become a city road, or is that a private road?
It will be a private road at this time, but it's designed for the town road specs, yep. So that in the future, it could be, um, dedicated to, uh, to the town if they were to allow it and, and, uh, do so.
You know, Fig, who's gonna have to maintain that, is that us, or is that the owners of the property?
We're the primary users, and we would, we would take care of it. And then if, as development would happen on the other property, and whatever's developed there, then they would take on a part, portion of the, uh, maintenance of it.
Well, thank you, always available for, uh, any other questions, and we'll go over to the rest of our team.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
All right, well, what, if we go to the next slide, Fig, or whoever's controlling, Rich, okay?
Actually, Jen, I think you got it right.
Oh, sorry. So, what, what I want to spend some time on today is just kind of talking a little bit about, um, CG Smith's experience in Monroe, and that's related, then, to that subcontractor engagement, engagement and commitment to local contractors. Um, just briefly, I want to talk about our approach to estimating, and how we're gonna estimate, uh, the ones we've already done and moving forward. Then we'll review the cost estimate. Um, this could take probably an hour to go over, so what I'm gonna do is do it a little more high level, but if, if people want to go over line by line and really get into details, let me know, and we'll set up a meeting to do that. I think there might be some already set up. Then I'm gonna go over, um, schedule review. Again, this is a high-level timeline, but we'll go over the different bid packages, the different budgeting exercises, and then, uh, you know, when construction would start and finish. Then we'll ask some time for questions after that. So, if we go with the next slide. So, this, I think people have seen this before, but I just wanted to kind of refresh everyone's memories. So, we have quite a bit of work in Monroe, we're very committed to Monroe. I'm not gonna list out all these projects, but you can see them up there. Um, these are also projects that we've also sponsored golf, um, golf events for them, we've donated money to them, we donated our services. So, we're really committed to the community and, and giving back as well. Um, then if we go to the, the next one, so, um, commitment to local subcontract, and go one more slide after that. Uh, so I'm gonna kind of go over that process on, on how we do that. Um, the first thing we do that isn't listed here, but we create a bidder's list. Uh, we, we, the board reviews that, we're already in the process of doing that. Uh, Ron has a copy of that, but we're gonna share that with others. And we want to make sure we have, you know, the right group of contractors on there. So, we also pre-qualify every contractor, um, and that's a process where we check their financials, their safety record, make sure they're, you know, qualified to do the work we're asking them to do. Uh, then we, um, we don't just send out an email blast to all these contractors, we actually reach out to them and call them and talk to them, understand, you know, what they're interested in doing, what their capacity is, different things like that. Uh, we then break down our bid package to kind of accommodate some of the, you know, what they're capable of doing. Uh, we also, we've done quite a bit of work, that's why I wanted to show that other slide, all the work we've done here, so we know the contractors. Um, but we'll also reach out to other contractors as well, so we really have a, a wide range of contractors to choose from, and we're, we're really trying to target that three to five bidders in every category. 'Cause we feel like we're gonna get the best pricing when we, when we do that. Uh, we also have done subcontractor engagement sessions, which we found to be very successful, where we kind of bring those local contractors into a room all together, we may get pizza and refreshments, whatever. And then we really just meet with them individually and understand, you know, what they're interested in doing, what they're capable of doing, and we can kind of customize bid packages, uh, to that, and I'll show how we do that in a minute. Um, and then what we do is, you know, once we get all those bids, we get everything apples to apples, we show all the backup, we may, you know, recommend who the apparent little bidder is, but it's really up to the board to choose who they, who they want to use on the project. We go to the next slide. This kind of shows that example of, um, you know, how we can break those bid packages into smaller, uh, bid packages, so glass is an example. There's some contractors out there that can do all that, they can do exterior glass, mirrors, interior glass. There may be someone who, who can't do all that, so we can break it into the smaller pieces here, just to give everyone an opportunity to compete on the project, and hopefully, you know, be part of the project. So, we can do, this is just an example of glass, we can do that with carpentry, we can do that with really, uh, electrical, we can do that with, um, a lot of different trades we can, we can break into smaller pieces. Does that all make sense, kind of how we do that? Kind of going through these fairly, fairly quickly, but the next one, um, is our budgeting. If we go to the slide after that, um, this kind of, it graphically shows kind of how we approach it. You know, the one on the left, that's just, that's one approach, is take the plans, um, and then just use that historical data, come up with a price, and we don't really feel like that gives a lot of budget, that's some budget uncertainty there, it's not as accurate as it can be. So, what we do is we take those plans, I know we, you know, we do takeoffs off those, we're at, you know, the user group meetings with the design meetings, understanding, uh, the changes that are being made, um, how the design's developing. Um, we also, you know, have quite a bit of experience in the K-12 markets, probably forty percent of what we do, um, as a company. So, we have a, we, we know what it takes to build, you know, a high school. So, if something isn't drawn, we know, we can fill in the blanks, and we know, you know, what's needed to complete that design. Uh, we've done, you know, several site visits, visits on this project, we had the geotectical report, we do look at historical data, 'cause that is, that is important. Uh, but we also get subcontractor input, which we did on this last pricing exercise. We also have in-house mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and low voltage project managers that also can get their input. We're forecasting inflation constantly, which the good news is, it seems like it's starting to calm down. Um, and there's many other things we put in there to get that as accurate as possible, so it's kind of a tried and true process, and we've never exceeded a referendum budget, and we think because of the, the time and effort we put into, um, i- is why that, that happens. Um, if we go to the next one, now we'll get into the actual cost estimate, and what, um, so we'll start off, this is, um, an executive summary, just kind of high level, looking at the numbers. Um, so what it shows here is, you know, what, what we included in this number right here is the construction cost. There's also soft costs, um, that are associated with a project that isn't included with this, but that is, you know, we, that is calculated in the total project budget. So, we included the building, we included the athletic fields, the road to KK that we just looked at is included in there, and in all the site. Um, everything associated with site is included in that number, it's about seventy-one acres, we're about two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand square feet. Um, so where we're landing right now is about eighty-two million, two fifty-two. So, the budget that we have in the referendum for this is eighty-two million, three hundred, so we're slightly under right now, so that's really good news. We made a lot of progress since we last met, I don't know if you remember, but we were over that amount last time, and we had several meetings to figure out how to get it back in budget, and we, we found some savings without, without affecting program on the building. Which was always the goal, to, to get it within budget without affecting program. Um, just some other high-level information, which we'll go over in a little more detail in a minute, but we're looking at, uh, you know, late April, early May, start of construction of this year, so it's coming up quickly. Um, looking at completing the project in March, end of March of two thousand and twenty-six. Uh, that gives plenty of time, then, for the district to move into that new building, for that school year, starting in the fall of twenty-six. And, um, yeah, so that's kind of the high-level overview of the budget, and now the next slide. Um, this kind of gets into the detail of the budget, and there's even more detail behind what you, what you see here. So, this is, I mean, before I keep going on this, is any questions, or this is probably where we have the questions, is on the budget, but... All right, well, let me, let me keep going, then. So, this is what we call a budget summary, and, uh, for this exercise, you know, all those things I talked about, we did. We did a full takeoff, we got subcontractor input, um, in some cases, we use historical data, compared that to the subcontractor number, so we really feel confident with the number that we're sharing here. So, as we start from the top here, we have these general requirements and management supervision, so that's kind of the staff that's gonna oversee this project during the construction phase. And then it's all the other things, those incidentals that are needed to complete the work, so, uh, job trailer, dumpsters, portage-ons, um, you know, any lifting equipment, things like that, it's all included in those numbers. Um, the permit, we do have the permit, um, covered, it's just in the soft cost, not in the construction cost. Uh, we have temporary fence, final cleaning, so I think those are, are fairly basic. Uh, then we look at the concrete, so this includes all the concrete on the project, it would be the footings and foundations, um, the slab on metal deck, all the site concrete, that's all included in this number here, as well as the rebar. Uh, the next one is the pre-cast, so we, we do have pre-cast incorporated, um, into this project, so that's the cost for including that, is structural pre-cast that we have on this project. Um, we have masonry, so we have masonry that's, uh, structural, it's also for the shafts and the elevators, and, uh, could be mechanic, or stairwells, things like that. So, that's the masonry part of it, then we have steel, so this is the structural steel used, uh, you know, to support the building. This is trusses, metal deck, um, different things like that, that are part of the structure of the building. Uh, then we have metal fabrications, that's more your stairs and railings and different things like that, the miscellaneous metals that are needed for the project. Um, rough carpentry, that's kind of like blocking that's used throughout the project. Um, the finished carpentry, that's more your, um, you know, your cabinets, um, and, and things like that, that, that are needed, like in the science area cabinets, uh, other cabinets throughout the project, there's, there's other, other things included there as well. Um, architectural woodwork, um, same thing, um, uh, the different cabinets and things. One is more the, between the two, we have the labor and the, the material included for both of those. Um, the wood siding, it says wood siding, it's not wood siding, it's fiber cement board siding, and that's just a category that it falls under in our estimating software. So, we have, we have different type of material on the building, we have metal panels, uh, fiber cement board, we got EFIS up high in some, uh, limited areas up high in the building. But you'll see that in a little bit, when we go over the architectural renderings and the fly-through. Uh, there's different damp proofing, waterproofing that, that's needed for the project. Um, there's the, the, you know, the, the exterior wall system that I talked about, the metal panels. We have a fully adhered rubber roof on, on top of the building. Um, then we have all the doors and, uh, the frames and the hardware that are needed throughout the building, so that's, you know, that's a little, little bigger number, a lot of those, um, on the project. Uh, we have some specialty doors, so in that, the shop area, lorry dock area, we'll need overhead doors and things like that. And then at the, then we have, um, glass and aluminum, you know, at select areas in the building. So, at the atrium, as you walk in on both ends, that's gonna be glass and aluminum doors, we have that at, uh, the stairwells as well. So, in, in limited areas, we have some glass incorporated into the project, too. Um, and then, uh, gypsum board assembly, so that's all your stud framing, it creates the walls, and a drywall that goes on top of it. If we go with the next one, um, tile, we, we have some tile on the project, it's mostly in the bathrooms on the floor, and then we have some wet walls where we have some tile. Acoustical ceiling, we have a lot of tile, like you see like this, uh, acoustical tile in a grid, um, throughout the building. Uh, resilient floors, we have different types of floor, we have, um, we have polished concrete, we have epoxy floors, or we have, um, um, we have carpet in some areas, we have, um... Luxury vinyl tile, sorry, I drew a blank on that, so we have all different floors, so that's kind of incorporated in the next couple of line items here. Um, and then we go into, uh, paintings, so we got paint, you know, throughout the building. Uh, we have kind of, you know, limited wall coverings on this project, it's mostly paint, uh, paint everywhere. Uh, information specialties, um, uh, we have a little bit of money in there for, I think there's some limited sign, signage and things like that, mostly that's covered in the soft cost. Uh, interior specialties, that's more of the lockers, the lockers that you would see, um, you know, for the students to, you know, store all their, their books in and, and jackets and things like that. Toilet and bath accessories, so we have fire extinguisher cabinets, the toilet paper dispensers, all that, all that stuff that's needed in the project. Um, athletic equipment, so we got a, you know, bigger number there, so you got your basketball hoops and e- everything that's needed, uh, you know, for, for that. We have, um, the appliances are covered in the soft cost, we do have money put aside for that. Uh, food surface equipment, we have in the construction cost, we got about one-point-four million for all that. Uh, that's actually currently, um, in the process of being designed, and then we'll kind of, you know, validate those numbers as that, as that design finishes, but we, we feel real confident that we have enough money to cover all that in that number. We got some window treatments in there. Uh, the manufactured, uh, casework, this is the, um, the bleachers, uh, no, this is, I'm sorry, this is a seating in the PAC. And it, we're gonna reword that, because that's just kind of in the estimating software that it falls under, but that's actually a seating in the PAC. Uh, we have the bleachers then, so that's the bleachers in the football stadium, the bleachers in the basketball, on the basketball courts. Um, theater equipment, so all the equipment need for the theater is covered there. The pre-engineered building, that's one of the, uh, maintenance buildings, uh, that's, uh, it's, it's probably the most cost-effective way to build a building like that, and it, it kind of makes sense for, for that type of building. Uh, conveying equipment is elevators, so we have two elevators in the, in the building, and they, two stops on each one. And then we have, the next section is all the mechanical, electrical plumbing, so we have fire suppression, which is your sprinkler system. Uh, we have the plumbing, which, um, you know, is, is exactly that, the underfloor plumbing, all the water, the, um, the drains, everything, uh, you know, needed for the, the toilets and sinks and so on. Uh, then we have the HVAC system, which is, we have air, air handling units that'll be on the roof, and that's what's gonna heat and cool all the spaces. If we go to the next slide, we have the electrical, so this is all the power needed for the building, lighting, and we also have in there a security, uh, uh, fire alarm system, um, as well as a few other low voltage systems included in that. And then the rest of it is kind of the, the site, so you have the earthwork, which is all the, uh, you know, all the, moving all the dirt that's needed on the site, and then all the stone also needed to put back in place under structural areas. Uh, then we have the asphalt paving, uh, for all the roads and parking, parking lots and the curves and, and the sidewalk. In fact, actually, the curves and sidewalk, that's all in that, that concrete number, this is just the asphalt. Um, and then we kind of have the hardscaping, the fencing, hardscaping, planters, benches, things like that. Then we have the landscaping, which is really the, the seating and any shrubs and things like that that are needed, and utilities, so utilities would be the stormwater, um, uh, stormwater, uh, waste, all that on the site. Um, and that's the last piece. So, that kind of subtotals to six, seventy-seven million, six eighteen. We do have a two-million-dollar contingency in there, there's also a contingency, another million-dollar contingency on the soft cost. Um, and then, uh, the next line item is, um, the insurance fee and bond, this is all based on, um, you know, the, when we proposed on this project, we kept all that the same. And then we have a total cost there of eighty-two million, two fifty-two, six ninety-six. So, I said a lot, in a, in a pretty short time, but I wanted to kind of get you a feel for what was all included in, in that number, so questions on that?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Well, I have two, actually. So, if we don't have to do the parking islands and all that, will we see some savings in the asphalt cost, or is that in the concrete cost?
It, it would be in the concrete, and we've already, um, taken some of that, that was part of how we kind of got to the number we needed to get to. We feel fairly confident that we can do that, if we don't, then we'd have to find some savings somewhere else, or, you know, take that out of contingency to, to cover that. But, um, uh, I, I think what we've found out is, uh... But I, I think what we've found out is, it's, you know, we've still got to get it approved, but the variances have been approved in the past. And so we're, we're kind of banking on some of that savings coming, you know, being in the projects.
Okay. Now, my next question, when you say pre-engineered structures, are we talking post-frame buildings for those type of structures?
It would be a steel building and it would be, it would be for the maintenance shed and it would be a steel structure, you'd have kind of corrugated metal panels on the outside, the roof structure is all part of the building, it's, it's all designed, it's kind of a delegated design and it's, it's a very standard building, it's a building that'll function fine for the purposes it is, but it's, it's a less expensive way to build a building like that.
Is utilities planned, the electrical?
Yeah, I think we, we have that.
Just electric.
Yeah.
Two questions for me, I guess, a question and then also maybe feedback for, or advice for the presentation coming up on Wednesday, so I'm looking at slide ten. And so I see the overall, the total budget, but then the, the line items don't have any numbers by them, so help me understand why, why there isn't a cost estimate for each of the component parts of that table?
Oh, we just didn't, yeah, we just didn't put it on there, we can, if that, if you feel like that's something that, that people would want to see.
I would either fill in the component parts of the table or take out the unit, unit price and, and construction cost of each of them. I think those will be questions that people have, especially if they're blank, they say, well, why, why aren't you telling us how much is in the building versus the athletic versus the road?
Okay. Sure, yeah, I can, we can add those in there, we have it broken out on our, our detail. I was trying to keep this high-level and simple and, and get into details on the next one, but we can definitely do that. If you guys, if you guys think that's going to be value to the community when we...
Yeah, I think that's, that's good input, Jim, I think for the presentation, that would be beneficial.
Okay, we'll add that in.
Second question, the, so we went from one-point-five percent over to slowly under. Can you help us understand what the, what are the top kind of three to five big things that drove the reduction?
Yeah, so we, some of them, at the time, we had just order of magnitudes for things, for example, we need to have bedding within the, all the ponds. It's like peat moss and this.
Bioplastic material.
Bioplastic material. We had significantly, we probably, that was a big chunk, we, I think we had five-hundred million, five-hundred thousand, five-hundred, five-hundred thousand dollars for that, and we had, the quantity we had was a lot more, we had a lot more depth and area than we actually needed, so right away, we could just reduce that. So that was one of them.
Some square footage.
Oh. Yeah, in the fieldhouse, we were able to, to reduce some square footage in there, some kind of space, in space that wasn't really being utilized, so we were able to reduce some space in there as well, some square footage space. Those were probably the two or the, the bigger ones that, that we had.
Mechanicals.
Mechanicals off of the, the main floor.
Oh, that was the other one.
Penthouse.
Sorry, I'm drawing a blank on that one, we just went over all this, yeah, that, so what we did is, we did have all the mechanical equipment inside of the building, now what we did is we created a penthouse on the roof and we're putting all that, those air handling units on the roof. And what it does is it makes it more efficient for the HVAC contractor to distribute all the duct, ductwork throughout the building. And then also, we eliminated some of those spaces within the building, even though we did add space on the roof, but it's less expensive space on the roof than it is in the building.
I, I just want to clarify there, though, it, it sounds like we're putting mechanical systems on the roof and it's out, out in the elements, not the case, we just took more expensive space in the footprint of the building, moved it up where we can build it less expensively. It's still got a roof, walls inside, so it was just a cheaper way to build the mechanical space.
And there was a more, probably minor one where it was just a type of piping on the site, we did a different type of piping, we reviewed with the design team, they were comfortable with it, and so we were able to save some money just by doing that.
So the concrete wasn't one of the major ones, then? Because you said you took out the praise of the concrete already when I asked if there'd be a reduction.
Yeah, we already had taken that, that out, that was something we had discussed previously.
Okay.
Because we saw the same thing Mike saw, is that, that's a maintenance headache and it's a lot of cost to the project, so we had already looked at trying to, you know, take, take, reduce the cost before that, before we met previously.
Thank you.
The structural steel, is that all designed conventional or did you look at any pre-engineered options for that? And I ask because we, we've been, I think last week, we had some donations from, from Blue Scope Steel and Barco Pruden, which are somewhat local.
So say, I get looking at pre-engineered metal building for some of the spaces, is that?
Yeah.
We, we did look at that. We did look at that and that was on our, kind of our cost savings list, but we decided not to, just because to really capture the, maximize the savings, it kind of has to be a standalone building and we have to design it to their specs. And we'd almost have to make a connecting corridor then to the existing building, connect between those. And, and then what we also looked at is, we looked at a precast, structural precast for the building, the precast subcontractors aren't as busy as they have been in the past and their cost has come down, and we wanted to utilize, and it's a really good product to have, so we tried to utilize more of that than going to a pre-engineered metal building, just because it was more cost-effective. And we had some design constraints with that pre-engineered metal building, and I don't know that it would also give the, the look that we want to have, you know, and I don't think, you know, we want to, it wouldn't give the architectural appearance that I think we'd want to have for, for a high school, you know, because it's usually, you know, a, a more simpler corrugated metal panel, it looks a little more industrial.
But the maintenance building, the tennis and track and, track, or track and field storage, those could easily be...
Yeah, those, we did look at that, because that, it made sense for that, but for the majority of the school, we did something different.
If you haven't done, done all the structural design, I would recommend just throwing it at someone like Barco Pruden with your design as is, just to, to take a look at it, because they can bear on structural precast and they can do some pretty, pretty unique things. They're, they're just an example, they're local and they...
We've used them for, yeah. For different, different types of buildings, I think it was more in an industrial-type building that we've, we've used them for, but we have, yeah. Or we even looked at, well, does it make sense in, like the shop area or, you know, something like that, to do a building like that. But, but we, again, I think when we kind of looked at the pros and cons and different things, the precast seemed to make more sense, and I think once you see some of these renderings, it'll, it'll probably be a little more clear why we went that direction.
For the, the list of local contractors that you mentioned, the, the list is built and then vetted and then you reach out to them for the bidding process, how do the local contractors know if they're on that initial list to be vetted? Is there a process to that? Should they be reaching out to somebody to make sure they're on the list or?
Yeah, we, we do have a pretty good knowledge of all the local contractors just from working in the area. We also, we started with Ron, just because Ron had some time on one of the snow days to look at it, so he started looking at that already, but we'll kind of reach out to, to you guys too and then share the list and you may say, hey, we don't want them on there or add these to it. But then, yes, then we would start calling just to get, you know, talking about the project, and I think it would even make sense to have, you know, some of them we work with quite a bit, so we have a good relationship, but even to have one of those, you know, engagement sessions where we just bring them all in the room and we, we kind of do something like this where we talk about the project and the scope and then meet with them individually. And it, you know, it worked pretty well, we did it at, at the Dells, you know, when we did the project there, that was several years back, but I believe we had thirty-some percent local participation, which is, which is pretty good, so on that project, and I think it was because we, you know, put that extra effort into doing that.
And I think you can use our local Chamber of Commerce to put the word out, for their membership.
Yeah, and we, we have a, a software too called, and if we, we can do that, we could put it in a local paper, the Chamber. We have this program called Building Connected that we can, you know, distribute this all to the contractors and, and let them, what I was going to start off was let them know the, the bidding schedule, just so they know when the bid packages are coming up and just to kind of start planning for that out, you know, for the next, next year work, but yeah, that's, that's a good idea too, so. All those, all those are, are great ways to do it. Everyone knows about the project, which is kind of good, and everyone are calling us and asking, saying, hey, can we get on the bidders list, which is good, that's a good sign, so. Good questions. Should we go over schedule next? I want to make sure that Michael has time, any other questions for him? No? Okay. So what, what I did here, and hopefully you guys can see this okay, it's a little small, but I did kind of a timeline from, you know, when the referendum was passed until, you know, the school opens in, in the fall of twenty-six. So, you know, we start on the left there, upper left on the top, referendum passed, there was a process we went through for the land selection, that got approved, and then the design started. So typically, there's like a schematic design, design development period, I put that all as design development, and then we go into the construction document phase of the project. So that's kind of listed, listed there. Then that first star I showed, there's the first, you know, major budget update that we did, as you can see, we got quite a bit of that design done and we had a lot of information and we did that budget, budget exercise, which is what I shared with you previously. Just before that, we had bid out the HVAC work at Abraham Lincoln, so that's all in the process of being designed and that work is planned to go in place this, this summer in two thousand and twenty-four. So then, the first bid package that we have is in, that black there, it's on February twenty-eighth and it's going to be the site excavation, so it's going to be all the, you know, the site utilities, the grading, everything we need to do to start getting out there and moving there. So that's the first one that goes out there. We typically need about six weeks, I'm showing eight weeks here, it's about a month to bid everything out, there's like a week, maybe a little longer for us to meet with the contractors, and we go through this buyout period and make sure that they have everything included they're, they're supposed to have, and then we need some time to present it to the board and get approval to move ahead with them. So that's what that kind of block of time is there. Then after that, at that time, we're also going to look at doing another budget update. So on four fifteen, April fifteenth, about two months from now, we'll have another budget update, the drawings will be further along, and then we'll actually have bid numbers on, on the site. Then bid package two is going to be March twenty-ninth, and there's going to be, and it, there's, there's bid package two and three included in there, but it's going to be the, the whole structure of the building, the footings and foundations, the athletic fields, and what we are proposing to do is to bring on mechanical, electrical and plumbing contractors, they would still, you know, provide a cost for the project even though it's not fully designed yet. And, but I think it's important to bring them on early so they can kind of provide some assistance with, you know, where equipment is located, looking at different types of equipment, they may have some cost-saving ideas, things like that. So that, that's the plan there, is to bring them on board then. And then we go through that bidding exercise, that sixty-eight weeks, and then where there's another budget update, so on June third, we would call what we have an initial guaranteed maximum price. And at that point, we'd probably have about sixty-five, seventy percent of the scope of work bid, and that's kind of that, that initial guarantee, and that's almost all the scopes bid. Then the last one, a bid package would be June twenty-first, that'd be bid package four, it's four and five, but they're combined, but that'd be everything in the building, so all the inside of the building, the, the walls, the floors, the ceilings, you know, the painting, the casework, the doors, all that would be included in that. The mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, plumbing would be designed, so we'd have complete design in that and in landscaping, and that'd be the last one. So then we take that same process, go through that, and then have the final GMP on September ninth. And then that's all the bid packages we have, so the next, the next line there in blue, so that's the construction phase, so we're looking at that late April, a lot of its weather dependent, late April, early May start, twenty-two months to complete that, so that puts us out into, you know, right beginning of February of, of, you know, twenty-six. Then I think what's nice about this is there's plenty of time to kind of get for the school to move into that building, get ready for the next school year. We'd also have work at Abraham Lincoln, so the first phase of work is the HVAC work, which will happen this summer, and then the next phase is kind of everything else, the ADA, ADA bathrooms and all the other work that we're, we're going to be doing there. So questions on that? Does that make sense?
I do have one kind of question concern. So currently, our, we're scheduled to close no later than thirty-first, but that's contingent on a couple of things yet. If that contingency, if, if the closing day gets pushed back again, we've been kind of jumping a month at a time, that would push it kind of right to where you plan on doing the site excavation bid package? And one of the, the local contractors has an interest in the, the property and the closing that might create a conflict of interest, how would we deal with that? Would we push back the bid date or would we bid and exclude that contractor from the, the bidding?
So you're talking about the, the landowner who also has the, your rate excavation company? And is the question whether...
How bad would it affect us if that bid date got pushed back?
Yeah, I mean, it, we, we do have a little time in there, you know, to still start, like right now, the way it is, it's, you know, we got March, April, I mean, that's about, that's how much time we need, because we also have to issue, you know, we have to bid it, which is about a month, buy it out, get approval, then we have to issue contracts, they got to order material, that. It, it would just, what it would really do is just, it might push the start date by a little bit, so instead of starting, you know, end of April, beginning of May, we would just start a little later. I don't know that that affects, you know, if the end date pushes a little, I don't know that that makes that big of a difference, just...
Mike, I think I'd, I'd add to that, this project is not about a, a difficult schedule to get to the end date, right? I mean, your, your end date quite, is quite comfortable with respect to opening for school in the fall, right? So if we slipped a month on, on your end date, not too worried about it. I think the bigger deal is what penalty do we pay from a construction standpoint? We'd have to do a little bit of an analysis and say, if you get in the ground a month later, where does that put us in November of next year where we've got to do temporary heating? We're, we're a month behind where we wanted to be for that. So I think that, I think the cost is so much less about your schedule and it's really about construction operations and what, what do we lose on temporary protection, temporary heat.
And I was less concerned about overall schedule than more concerned about pointing out that, the potential conflict of interest that the schedule's kind of heading towards.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good thing to mention, but also to, to qualify it that it's, it's based on a, you know, a what, if they continue...
Right.
Or we continue to extend it this by one month at a time...
Yeah.
Then there's a possibility that we do have to deal with this at some point, but I would be hopeful that, you know, being cognizant of this, we're working with them to extend it, if it has to go beyond the twenty-eight, we can work that out. But that's a good one, good item to call out.
Yeah, and I can look at what, what Mike, other Mike has talked about, is I can look at when, you know, when we start getting into, you know, winter heat and things like that, if that adds cost to the project. I mean, right now, we're, we're trying to utilize just the warm weather months for all the concrete and everything as, as much as we can, but, you know, there, there will be a point where we do have to add some temporary heat and cooling in the building, because we're going over several seasons throughout the duration of the project, so.
Really quick thoughts for the presentation on Wednesday. One, I think it would be good to even just give a, a quick overview of the diligence you all have done with the working groups to, to get to the design that we have.
Okay.
Just to, because it seems like a pretty incredible job of including voices, especially from, I mean, Jeremy and his staff, just to represent the work that they've done with you all. Second thought, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't see a ton of utility in sharing the line-by-line cost in its current form, and maybe this is something you guys have done and it works and makes, but I'm, I'm trying to understand as a community member, like what, how do I make meaning of the, whatever, hundred lines of, of budget that we have here, so is there some way to give like a frame of reference or, maybe you could just help me understand, why, why do we, why do we share the line-by-line with the community at this point, like what are we hoping to get out of that?
I was just trying to be open and transparent and show the information, it is a lot of information, yeah, and typically, we wouldn't share that, it would be, that information should be shared in a smaller group, and we kind of created, show it more on systems, you know, like, like that executive somewhere virtual, the site, maybe it's a few more breakdowns and that, the site, the athletic fields, the building, you know, the road to KK, things like that. It is a lot of information, it pride, doesn't, it may not mean a lot, I guess, for this group, I just wanted to just kind of show the level of detail that we put into it and we've always been very open and transparent with the information we have and I, I wanted to share it here, but if it doesn't, it, it may be a lot of information for the community as I, what I went over today to go over with them, I don't know what everyone else thinks about that.
Like, from a construction owner's standpoint, this is very good and very detailed, this is what I would expect to see, but to your point, is it what we want to share? I I would err on the side of oversharing. This this is what I would typically look to see in a budget process for a for a large commercial construction process.
Well, maybe for presentation, you don't need to go through each line on that.
Okay.
But I tend to agree, I think you, I think we can overshare and put it out there so people who are interested understand, have it and then, you know, like then we have that overview general for people like me.
Those those six digits up front are their their construction divisions, so anyone that is from the community that's looking at a specific area, they they know what division their work is in, so they can they can see, so.
What what I can do is like each one of those pages, I can highlight one or two of the higher cost items and just explain that. I went in a little more detail here, just because it's a smaller group and I I wanted to share a little bit, a little bit more, but that I could do that and I think I'll add to the executive summary, what we talked about earlier, the breakouts of the different systems. And then just highlight a couple of those and if people want more detail, I can stay later or they can get a copy of it too, right?
Yeah, I'd rather show it all personally.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Good, good feedback, thank you. All right, are we up for Michael or, all right.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Okay. So, are we, are we gonna, is everybody gonna be able to see this or?
So it's on this?
It'll only be on this one. Everybody want to move over to the other end? I think that makes the most sense.
Yeah.
I'll go on this side. Okay. Well, this is the fun part of the night. And the good news is I only have, what, forty five minutes of battery in this thing, so I can't do this much longer than that. Just gonna move this out of the way a bit. What I'm going to do is walk you through the building literally at the end of the presentation, but before then, I wanted to walk you through the plans a little bit, just to give a little bit more detail on the plan. So we're going to start out a little slowly here and then we're going to work our way. Okay, so little little teaser at the beginning here, showing you the front door of the of the new building and there's a lot more to see, but as I said, I'd like to talk a little bit about the plans. So if you remember the site plan that Jesse showed before, you know, he talked about the corridor, I'm going to call it the commons. And what you're seeing here is the southern half of the building and then the next slide will be the northern half. So I'm going to concentrate first on the southern half. When you enter the building, on the west side of the building, Thirty First Street Avenue is that way, enter into a vestibule and then you turn right into the administration area where you will announce yourself and get your credentials to actually enter through another locked door and go into the into the school building. So unlike it is now, you will not be able to get into the school without having to go through two locked doors to get into the building. So this pink area here, or red area, is the entire administration area, so we've got the associate principal, the principal, the counselors, the career center and so forth. That's all in this area here. Further down the commons, we have the consumer art or the consumer education area, the health room, and so that's these two rooms. And then we've got the art department in purple, so we've got three D art, two D art, computer and photography studios. And then further down this corridor, this is all the CTE areas. So we've got a launch area here, we've got the automotive shop, the metal shop, the woods area, the trades area and the fab lab. Okay, so this is all teaching areas through here. And then we have the commons going to that center service area that Jesse was talking about, where we've got the servery that opens up onto the commons, the kitchen behind that, receiving behind that, some accounting areas and some storage areas. So this whole gray area is back of house. So students are going down this corridor and accessing all this stuff, not so much down this corridor, this more of a service corridor for everybody.
Michael, question over here.
Sorry, Mike. In the CTE areas, are those, will there be windows between the departments or?
Yes, yeah, there there are a certain amount of windows. We can get into some detail on that later, but they do want to be able to see a little bit of between the two, between all the different areas. So there are doors and windows connecting them to some extent. Then down at the other end of the commons, we have the four station fieldhouse. And that is entered from the commons directly through these doors onto this raised walkway and you load the bleachers from the top. So the gym floor is fourteen feet below the commons floor. Walk through those doors, I'll show you this picture later, but you come in here and and go down to the bleachers. You can also access the multipurpose room or the fitness room on this level. Two more stations down here for basketball and all kinds of activities that are planned for the the fieldhouse. This area here is the part of the, what we're calling the track, that may or may not be built on day one, just depends whether we have the money to to build it on day one, but the facility is designed to accommodate it, the structure will be designed to accommodate it and it can be added in the future or by day one, depending on how the costs work out. Okay, all the seating that's shown in in the commons is mostly designed to accommodate a large number of students that will be in here for the for lunch, but it's also the community and social center of the building. So we're planning on making it not so much a cafeteria with a lot of movable, large folding tables and so forth. We wanted to make it more collegiate feeling, so we want to have some high top tables, some harvest tables, some soft seating, all kinds of different varieties of things going on in here so that the kids can feel a little bit like they're already at that next level and and really enjoy the space throughout the day. And same thing with the community. So when people are coming in, as as Jesse was talking about, coming through these doors to possibly use these very large toilet rooms, which are here to serve the fieldhouse and the auditorium, they'll be able to use the space as well, you know, warm up or or, you know, hit the concession window here. And it just, it's, we really intend for this to become a major focus for the building and for the community. So let's talk about the northern half, a little bit simpler. When you come in to the building again, this is all classrooms, so we have in the dark blue, we have special education functions. And then the light blue on this first floor are all English classrooms. There is a learning center here, a teacher learning center and an intervention room as well, and another toilet room area serving this wing and this end of the of the commons. In between that projection and this projection, we have the IMC, which you'll be able to see through out to the courtyard. And then if you continue further, we have the mouse house and the ag classrooms that would have access to the greenhouse. And you might notice there's there's a couple of things that, especially my fly around, you'll see that we're not completely coordinated on our orientation of the field, of the greenhouse and some of the walkways and stuff. We are right now in finishing what we call schematic design. So as architects, we have three phases, schematics, design development and construction documents, and then there's construction administration, but when we're doing drawings like this, we're just finishing basically one half of the design phase. So there's still stuff that is is still pushing and pulling a little bit, so. Still some design to go. So we talked about the ag area, all this purple here is the stage and the auditorium. Then we have the back of house for the auditorium, the scene shop, the costume area, the makeup and and dressing rooms. And then this is the whole music area. So we have band ensemble and choir in this area and then all the practice rooms associated with that. All right, let's talk about the second floor. Second floor northwest, more of the same classrooms here, we have foreign language classrooms in the in the reddish color and math in the blue in an intervention room, flex pullout for special ed. And then going across a bridge here, so this is the commons, right? It's a two story space. We're going to walk across a bridge to get to the other side where we have the teachers' lounge, business classrooms and social studies with a flex space at the end of that area. These blue areas are all science classrooms, so physics, biology, no, physics, chemistry and biology with another flex area. So connecting all that is a is a bridge that overlooks the commons. So the commons is fifty feet wide, that's about a ten foot wide walkway that overlooks the forty foot gap that you look down on. Okay, and then we talked about mechanical penthouses, that's all that is back there and it's not actually access from here, it would be access from inside the scene shop. Okay. Went the wrong way, sorry. All right, so let's talk about the lower level. This is that fieldhouse again and it's just kind of a color coded drawing right now. About half of the fieldhouse is a wood floor and the other is a rubberized flooring material with the JV floor on this end and obviously the the bleachers are shown fully extended here. And then behind this wall, but part of the overall space really are the locker rooms. So we have PE, women's PE, women, I'm sorry, women's team, men's team, men's PE, training room, and officiator, officials, changing rooms. And all of these people can come out and go straight to the football field or the athletic fields from from this door here. Okay, any questions on the plans?
The bathrooms down there somewhere?
Are they in the locker rooms or?
The whole thing is bathrooms, really, you know, but the bathrooms for here would be would be, you're, all the fans should be exiting on the set, on the first level.
On the second floor.
Yeah. Yeah, we're calling this the lower level.
The middle ground floor.
So everybody goes this way to the bathrooms from their seats, go up. Same thing from the auditorium, they go here. One thing I did not mention is we do have actual straight out access for the band to get to have access to the football field.
Can we go back to the gym? So currently, we we often have two events happening simultaneously. How'd that happen here?
Well, we do have the provision for a curtain.
Okay, but no seating?
No, there's no, there would be rollout seating available, there's, these areas are available for that, but no built in seating.
I'm sure if we had that walking track, they could also stand around and line up above and we could always see.
That's cool, okay, thanks.
Okay.
How much, and sorry, what does the seating in the gym look like compared to what we currently have?
Volume, it's a little bit more than what we currently have, I think it was eighteen thirty?
Yeah, we have eighteen hundred seats right here.
Okay. And where's-
Now, if you include it, which we rarely do pulling that top, it's probably more comparable to that, but most of the time we just have the two sides, yeah.
And where is wrestling?
In the multipurpose room on the second floor.
Okay, thanks.
Right there.
Okay.
And for big tournaments, we're able to put lots of mats in that main gym.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on the on the plans?
I missed it, what was, math? We talked about-
Math was on the first floor.
On the second floor, you said.
Second floor, I'm sorry, yep. Right, these two, these four blue areas and then this is foreign language and English language for foreign speakers.
So going back to the gym, where would wrestling take place?
In the gym.
In the main gym?
Not practice.
But what about practice, yeah.
Practice is in the multipurpose room on the second floor next to the fitness center.
Okay, thank you.
There we go.
And does the multipurpose room also serve for dance?
When wrestling's not in there, yep. It also serves like, we would have batting batting cages and that softball, baseball could use when wrestling's not in there too. And then the courts they could use as well, when basketball's not in there.
How does the fitness area compare to what we currently have? I'm sorry, I'm visual, I'm just trying to be like, okay.
That's great.
Everything will be in one place instead of having two separate rooms.
Right, right.
It'll be purpose designed, I think it's nearly double the size. If you put the two rooms together, no, our two rooms are pretty small.
Right, right.
If you put those two rooms together, I think it's nearly double the size.
Okay.
By two, you mean both the weight room and the fitness room?
Correct.
Not, because some people count the weight room as two little rooms, when it was really a tiny room.
The weight, the whole weight room and the whole fitness room, fitness room together, about twice that.
Okay.
Let's take a look at the outside of the building. Take you back to where we kind of started. So this is a little pull up from the original image that I showed you at the very beginning of the presentation. This is the entrance to the school facing west, there's a large entrance plaza and opportunity for a lot of things to happen here, bikes, benches, planting. I didn't put a lot of entourage people, things in these images yet. As I said, we're we're just still still working on the project, but I wanted to stop here for a minute and kind of show you a little bit. I like to do it this way because we we focus on little areas of the building and then we show you the big things. So in this image, you're seeing most prominently perhaps this bright red screen, it's a perforated corrugated metal screen upon which we would have these internally lit letters for the school. So you can kind of see, you can actually see through this material a little bit and it extends the entire face of that administration. When you're seeing a glimpse of the administration wing with a little bit of that metal panel that we were talking about earlier, that's included in the project, there's your curtain, your glass and aluminum entrances. This is another metal material, this is a Borden Battin style metal panel system enclosing part of the learning center. And then this is that precast facade we're using on the building about, you know, I don't know, it's about eighty five percent of the building is precast concrete. This, these are designed so that most of these panels are the, there's only two types of panels used repetitively throughout the the building. They have a a different finish on the top than they do on the bottom, giving it this kind of light gray granite appearance on the top. And so this panel is very similar to that panel and that, these two pieces are integrated into the into the concrete panel. We chose this type of design for for these classroom areas, this is that two story classroom wing to maximize the amount of glass and light and views and, you know, to energize these classrooms as best we could. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. Going down to the the northwest corner of the of the building, you can see a little bit more detail about what that might look like. You know, this is not exactly what it's going to look like, given the program that we're using, it's pretty reasonable, basically, light concrete, dark concrete and then some metal panels and and concrete built in up here, depending on where the walls hit. We talked about having a little bit of glass in the project, so these are the stairs, there's three stairs that are designed like this with full glass on the exterior. This is just ripped concrete with a dark finish. Going to the opposite corner, the southwest corner, again, same material, but different treatment, so this is still precast concrete. And the the trick here is that, you know, these are the CTE rooms and many of them, the teachers down here are saying, you know, well, we want windows, but we need as much wall space as possible, so the windows need to be high. So that's why you're seeing these windows up high in these spaces. But in order to save money on this- But in order to save money on this and get the most economy out of precast concrete, we actually take a panel like this and just rotate it and use it in a different way to provide vision glass. So, it's the same, oops, it's the same panel, just turned. And so, that's why you get this effect of some of these are up, some of these are down. And then metal panel on the administrative area, that's that second floor south classroom wing. That's one of those penthouses on the end of that classroom wing. Rotating further around, you're seeing again the end of the CTE wing with their large garage doors. That's that service plaza that Jesse was talking about. And then you can see how we're using the site to have most of the building up on the high portion of the site, but some of the building, like the gym, is down lower. And so, that's where you can exit here from these locker rooms out this door to go to the football field. Or you can come out of the gym down the stairs to come out here as well, down to the tennis courts and that other parking ramp or parking lot that's over here. And then this, of course, is the, is the fieldhouse. And here, I just, same concept, you turn these panels around and they become that. And it's just kind of a fun, a fun effect, the windows doing what they're doing. But it actually makes sense on the other side because this keeps going up and so, these windows are above the raised plaza or service court. Coming around again to the, where are we here? We're at the northeast corner. And this is the one that you would see Ron from the, where's Ron? From eleven. So, you know, opportunity for some signage from Highway eleven on the auditorium. This is the fly of the auditorium. This is the house of the auditorium. These are all the dressing rooms supporting the auditorium, the scene shop, another one of those penthouses. And then this is the music department. And then back there, you're seeing fitness and wrestling. Looking at that courtyard, scene shop, dressing areas, auditorium. These are those science classrooms. These are the ag classrooms down here with their greenhouse. And then this is the IMC and those are science classrooms, the physics, chemistry and biology. And here you're seeing two of those three glass-enclosed stairwells.
So, that glass designed is like riot glass?
Uh, it would be tempered, but not laminated.
The entries will have a hardened aspect to them?
Yeah.
Does current school design like this include all that first-floor class?
Absolutely.
I mean, I wish we didn't have to even discuss this, but that's a very weak point security-wise on a huge portion of the building.
Well, the classrooms, as far as, as far as we're concerned, the classrooms need to have it. And we wouldn't want to put the kids in rooms that don't have view or light. And as far as, is, I mean, you could, you could talk about that in a bunch of different ways. This isn't a really good form for that. I'm not a great person to argue this, but I'd rather see somebody coming than not see them. If we were to fortify the lowest level with laminated glass, it would be really difficult to get through it.
Do they have film which the schools currently have on their entrances that they got through the safety grant?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that was budgeted in or designed in or if that's something that we'd have to add if we wanted to put a security film on all the windows. So, and first floor, really, I mean, the second floor, you don't need it, right?
Yeah. Typically, we don't, typically, we don't talk about where it is, right?
Makes sense.
It is a feature of the building.
What is the IMC?
Library.
Library.
LMC.
I've seen it's every couple of years.
Okay.
IMC, okay.
I'm still saying home ec.
Right.
True.
Alright, so, now, we're back at the beginning, but now, we're gonna get a chance to see the whole building. So, this is where it's gonna start getting cool. Rise up here and fly around. There, you can get a better, better sense of that screening. You can see the south-facing glass that'll be daylighting the commons there and a little bit over the gym. This is the CTE. This is that south classroom wing. Trucks in there to give you some scale. Fieldhouse. Wrestling is here, well, multipurpose, fitness, and then the locker rooms are down here. This is that plaza that, and the entrance to the commons from that plaza. Then we have music, support for the auditorium, auditorium here, obviously. Science, ag, science, IMC, and then the two-story classroom wing. Get a glimpse of the football field back there. Now, we're gonna go inside. And this is, this is a treat because nobody has seen this. Just did it this weekend, so. I hope you like it. This is what you won't be able to do. You won't be able to just walk right into the school. You'll have to go into the administration. So, there you're seeing the walkway on your left above. Those are the actual photographs from your current.
Those are the, look at that.
I don't think we got the dates right.
That's awesome.
There's the servery and that is just placeholders. You're looking now at the IMC. Again, just placeholders showing the quantity of shelves. But, and you could also see through it, see the grass in the distance. Now, you're walking back towards, on your right there, you're seeing the red surround in front of the entrance to the fieldhouse. And on the left, that curved element here, that's the auditorium. And then there's some opportunities for showcasing what's going on in the auditorium. Now, this is the coolest part of the whole thing, watch this.
Is there gonna be music on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. Now, there's no colors in here yet. We don't have any branding on the walls. There's no cheesemaker stuff yet in here. There's a lot of that yet to come. But you're seeing into the fitness room and right from there. So, you'll be able to walk next to the fitness room and look down on the, on the gym.
Are those lights, those sticks?
Yeah, those are actually the exterior light posts. And then we're just gonna walk out and show you what this plaza would be like. But there's nothing shown out here. There's no press box or concession. It's a couple of kids enjoying the view. But, and it's quite a view.
That's cool.
So, that's the effects, you know, the bleachers are going to be like that. You'll be able to stand here and look over them.
Will you have dedicated, like, handicap spots, like seating spots on top?
Well, we would have that all available down here. And we talked about having them down on the field level as well. I mean, we were just talking about that, the handicap access to the lower level.
Yeah, typically.
But I mean, you meant seating, like.
The handicap on a top load like this gives some of the best seats for the handicap. Or a lot of times, they're at the bottom and they have some worse.
Yeah, yeah, that's great, that's great.
Okay, so, that's what I have. Any questions or comments? There was a lot to digest there, I'm sure.
So, will you have music to that on Wednesday?
Yes. Well, do we have the facilities for that? Because Lucas was asking me about that. He wants to put sound effects to the gym. There'll be a basketball in there.
Like when you punch the ball?
Yeah, I can do that myself. But I don't know what kind of audio we have in the IMC or the LMC or.
It'll be in the pack.
It'll be in the pack.
For the pack, yeah.
So, and you may not have it done, but will you have some of that flight, like the walkthrough to look at the pack or some of the classrooms?
Absolutely.
And that, like, so we can see some classroom space, okay.
I was, no, not for Wednesday.
Oh, not for Wednesday.
No way, no, the.
Roll that in there.
Now, with the pack.
Sleepless nights, come on.
The pack is a big effort. I've, I've done, I've done a couple of them and they take a good two, three weeks to. And we haven't even, if we walked inside the pack, there's, there's a lot going on in there that isn't built yet.
But once we're there, you'll have.
Someday, we'll come back and do this again for those.
Yeah, that's great. That's just super helpful to visualize and see.
To the left of the front entrance, what is that? Yes.
This is a piece of the, of the learning center.
And is it symmetrical or does it just appear to be unsymmetrical?
It's very unsymmetrical.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, this one is, well.
It's wider on this, on the left than it is on the right?
Um, oops. Oh, yeah, okay, we're good. So, you can see there, it's how, well, you can't actually. Oh, yeah, so this one comes in and this one goes that way.
We're looking at that to be a true academic resource center. It is, it is the learning center where kids are gonna be able to get support and help, but also our learning courses are gonna be in there. Our English Language Arts Interventionist is gonna be in there. So, there's gonna be a lot of academic resources right there next to the English and all the academic rooms.
No, I mean, I, that's all great. When I look at the front entrance, it almost like takes a little bit away from the grand entrance, so to speak.
Yeah, I like it on the right, but I'm not sure I like it on the left.
Yeah, it's, this is the.
We have a less tactical question for you. Is the, I, I would imagine you've done a bunch of these. Like, what's the, what's the element of this that you're, you're kind of most, that's either most unique or that you're most proud of?
It's a great question.
That's tough. I think the commons was the piece that is most dear to me because I think it, it's the piece that everybody will remember. It's the one that, you know, every, every team photo, every group photo, every, you know, I think kids are gonna remember it the most. It's gonna be where they spend their happiest times here. And to me, that is just really an important piece. Everything empties into it. It's just really gonna be a major focus for the school. So, that to me is most important part. But I think one of the things that, that I'm most, I don't want to say proud, but what I thought was really interesting about this is that we set out to do a school that met your budget. You know, it doesn't have a lot of the materials, let's say, that like Wisconsin Dells has. You know, there's a lot of stone, a lot of brick. And this, this school had to, had to be beautiful without those easy choices. And so, using precast concrete in the way that we chose to use it, I think was, was, I think it's gonna make a really cool-looking building and yet meet the budget. So, that was important.
For Josh and I, I think it's, although it looks huge and spread out, it's gonna be a lot easier for us to monitor because everything comes out that main commons. We're gonna like really be in the commons a lot and every kid has to come back to there to get to anything. Everything dead ends. So, it's gonna be easy to kind of walk up and down and look down those hallways and you can easily see on whichever level where people are.
Yeah, I mean, Jeremy's gonna circle there. If you stood up on that bridge, you could see almost the entire school.
And we want it to be a college feel. We want kids to, under RP's and release times, to sit there, like stay there. That's inviting and do some studying and have more like a college cafe-type atmosphere. I'm sure Ruby might like that.
I'm getting a little jealous watching all this.
I think I agreed with Michael that the commons is, especially, I kind of like how the light that even comes in the library. But I also think it was pretty interesting what he did as far as, him and Jesse, because Jesse's still here, I think. I looked to my right to see who he was. But what they did with both the, the fieldhouse and the football field of utilizing the, utilizing the landscape and making them both top-loading, I think they'll be neat features for our community, but also really used our, our land to the best of its ability.
Well, that was, when I saw the site, the first thing I said was, we gotta figure out a way to get the gym down so that we could enter the gym from the top, but also just walk out the back of the commons onto that plaza. That's one thing that we weren't able to do at the Dells. You know, at the end of the commons at the Dells, you go up the stairs into, and then you top-load their, their gym. Whereas here, you get to walk right down this corner, go through these doors and you're top-loading and you get to top-load your football field. I said to my colleague Steve Kike, I said, I mean, Texas is gonna be envious of our football field. Not saying a lot, they have some nice football fields. Thank you, everybody.
Michael, you wanna, can you work with Jim a little bit too before you go so we can get that coordinated, get that to work in the pack? Maybe a little easier, possible?
Yeah, I don't know if it was, if there's something wrong with that flash drive.
Potentially.
Thank you, Michael. Mike? How, how are we doing this time? How are you feeling?
Yeah, well, obviously, the excitement of the architectural presentation, I think, is extremely valid. You know, we, we work on a lot of different schools and I think what you look for is what's the heart of the school? And is that heart common to the student experience on a regular Monday through Friday? To also what the community is gonna experience on the evening and on the weekends of that building? And I think they've definitely hit it here. I think you have a good, strong core to the building, a good, good heart to it. So, I think there's, I, I want to compliment Michael on, we talked about this tension before between the budget and getting all the program in, not having too many square feet that we've got to pay for and really hitting the sweet spot on getting all that in, but being real efficient with it. I think there's a couple of examples that really showed how Michael was able to take that challenge to pull back some of the square feet. And in doing so, he actually made the building better. I think one, one really good example is on that main level coming into the gym, he previously had a corridor between the, the fieldhouse and the fitness center, the multi-use room. Well, he was able to take out about two thousand square feet by eliminating, eliminating that corridor. And in doing so, he, he made it such that your fitness center now has a direct view down into the gym, which I think will be a really spectacular piece. And, and people still have all the same access there. So, I thought that was fabulous. I thought another was, as you saw how the theater interacts with that heart, that core of the building, well, it didn't originally. It was, it was pushed back and that was, that was basically a flat wall. And when he was challenged a little bit on, can we save some square feet there? He actually pulled that PAC a little bit out into that, that, that commons and gave it that curved shape. So, when you, when you walk into that commons and you look down, you, you see, that's, that's the theater. It, it expresses itself right there in, in the, that core of the building. So, that was a couple of really good examples where we were able to save some significant square feet and make the, the building better. So, I really feel like we have a tremendously efficient building here and it's got all of the program that you're seeking. So, I, I personally am really. and it's got all of the program, uh, that, that you're seeking. So I, I, I personally am really thrilled with, uh, the, the product. Uh, and it also marks, uh, the, the end of schematic design. So very important that we're, we're now done with that whole activity of which piece fits next to the other piece and what's its shape and what's its size and do we squeeze it? We're done squeezing.
Okay. Yeah, I've been working on this since I was a teenager and it's been a lot of squeezing of square footage. We have about a third of, we have about two thirds of the circulation that we would typically program into a school, um, because of the efficiencies that we constantly were seeking in this school. And that's how a lot of that stuff that Mike's talking about came to be, just a lot of, does it really need to be this way? What if we did this? Can, can we shave 2,000 here, 2,000 there? So we have like 25% circulation factor and we typically use like 37 or 34 when we're programming a school.
So that's a good side. Just, just so he doesn't stop sweating, the next thing is that we're going to, we're going to be scrutinizing everything from what kind of doors are in the space, what kind of light it goes in there, what, what finishes are on the wall, can we, does it fit within our budget? There'll still be a lot of that tension, a lot of push back and forth, but we're, the, the building footprint is, is really set at that, this point, and that's just a really a major, major milestone. And, and we're there, uh, within the budget. I think the other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, I think we have to add one thing to the presentation for Wednesday. I think if, uh, if I was a community member sitting out there, I knew you passed an $88 million referendum and I just showed you 82.3 million dollars, you would say, what's, what's missing here? So the, the pieces in, from a, from a high level perspective, the pieces that are missing is we got $3.4 million that's over at A Blanket, right? So that's, that's really understandable. It, that takes your 82 up to 85.7, I think, eight. Um, then there's, uh, the, the soft costs that were, that were mentioned before. So you, you've got about $5 million in, uh, in professional, uh, consulting expenses. You've got $3.5 million in furniture fixtures and equipments. All this stuff that's going to go into this building, that nice furniture that, uh, Michael showed in the, in the Commons there, uh, everything down to, you know, welding machines and, uh, so on and so forth, the, uh, furniture and shelving in the, in the IMC, LMC, IMC? Ron, what is it today?
Whatever it is this week.
Okay.
Please, three, four times in my career.
Yep. So there, there's those, there's, there's expenses like, uh, uh, builder's risk, uh, insurance. So that's something we carry on there, uh, in, in our construction category. You have to have that insurance, uh, uh, in case there's a, you know, tornado that knocks something down and has to get, get rebuilt, things, things like that. So, uh, all of those things we can capture in, uh, I think one additional slide, uh, for Wednesday. Uh, and really just showing your, your sources, right? So you've got the $88 million in referendum. You've got the, the interest income that comes along with that. We've got some, uh, much, much smaller contributors to the overall project budgets, uh, some, some things like some food service, uh, dollars that are available. So I think we'll show one, one additional screen that shows how we get to the overall project costs.
Would that include the retention fees that you guys talked about earlier too, like the 2 million in hard costs and the 1 million in soft? Would that be a part of that 88 million budget?
Yeah, the, the, the 2 million is already in the number that.
Okay.
They shared today. And the 1 million is, uh, in contingency is, uh, will be shown in that other.
Okay, thank you.
That's about all I have.
I'm not sure who this question should be directed at, but how much material are we bringing over from the old high school? Whether that's like lockers or athletic equipment or just like furnishings in the classroom? How much is being carried over?
So, really good question. So we will look at, uh, the amount of money we have allocated for new furniture. Uh, it does not cover 100% of the building, right? So, and as part of our selection of a, uh, furniture vendor or in the furniture design process, there'll be a component of evaluating existing furniture. Now, CG Schmidt has, uh, some staff that does that as well. And I think you've already taken a preliminary look at it and tried to, there'll be a grading process, sort of a one, two, three, with, you know, three being got to throw it away, one, one, something we can come over and two is if the budget allows, it gets replaced. If it doesn't, it comes over. There'll be a whole process in that. Uh, so I can't answer exactly how much is going to come over, but it will be a pretty thought out, well thought out process.
So Ruby, you know, we have lots of new stuff, like some new, the new scoreboard on the football field, the new scoreboard in the, in the gyms, um, equipment, like in the weight room that we just got with the Pop Grand, not just, but not too long ago and is still really good shape. The fitness room, um, tech ed areas, the machinery that they have that we've been buying, some new equipment over the years. All of that stuff will come over. Probably won't come over is the 1960s desk and chair.
That's angry.
So it's just a balance of that kind of stuff. We did go through the building, took, probably six hours on two different nights to kind of grade one, two, three, um, if my assessment of that could be saved. Things if we absolutely had to, yes, they could be saved and things absolutely not. We're not going to put those kind of materials in, in the grade of the building.
All right. Any other questions for Mike or the entire project team? Thank you very much for your time and your effort and everything you put into it. We'll see you all Wednesday night. Can't thank you enough.
So I'd just like to have just one last statement here too. I think, uh, there's a lot of people have put a lot of time into this, in this room. And, uh, I think, I feel like when we get a chance to share this with the public, I hope they're going to be as excited as we are about it.
Josh and Jeremy, I thank you. I'm sure you've spent hours and hours with you guys doing this and the staff.
Yes, Jeremy spent lots of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Drive safely.
Drive carefully.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. It's item D, Curriculum and Instruction Committee Update. Um, this month, Todd's going to be sharing an academic update on our ELL current status, trends.
Yeah, so our academic update, second meeting of the month, um, trying to bring some of the information forward from the curriculum meeting, um, after the first meeting of the month. So, um, at the last meeting, we talked about math, elementary math already. Um, but the second part of that, uh, committee meeting was our ELL staff coming and sharing a little bit of information on, um, programming, a little bit on student numbers, um, and just kind of a summary of, of their work. Um, so I just want to point out a couple of quick things tonight. Tough act to follow with, with that, obviously. So, um, but the top two slides, and you see in board docs, you guys have access to a, a slideshow. Um, first two slides is just updated numbers. Um, so if you take a look at that, that document, and if you look at the first slide, you, you get a picture of from 1718 forward. And I know, I think I've shared this in the past, but it's just got updated information. Our numbers haven't really gone up from last year, but I'll show you in the next slide what's really gone up. Um, and some of that has resulted in we've, um, kids that were at the high school last year, um, we were able to move out of the ELL program because they reached a level that we can, no longer needed to serve them, um, along with a few additional kids at the elementary and middle school that we typically have exit the program as well. Um, if you go to slide two, um, this is where a couple of things really stand out. One is, um, you can see back in 1718, really didn't have any newcomers. And newcomers is, um, less than two years in the United States. So we really weren't working with students that were newcomers. We were working with a lot of students that were, were in the United States. Uh, we would have lots of academic information on them, um, be able to know lots of details in serving them. And then you kind of fast forward and you can see how that trend line has gone up to this year where we're serving 42 total newcomers. That's a lot. Um, and you also see the middle school and high school numbers start to trend up, um, where they really didn't have any newcomers. And now at the high school, we have 11 and the middle school, we have nine. And newcomers obviously come with many challenges in supporting them, them, but their families, um, especially when you get them at the high school and we're unsure really of their academic background, whether they have any credits, um, and how we're going to move them towards graduation or whatever program they really need. So, um, that's one thing that the ELL teachers did come and talk about and just the challenges that we deal with in serving those kids because they take a lot of resources. Um, I'll point out too, you know, as you s, go back to slide one and you see the trend of where we were at 72 and now we've doubled, um, I kind of went back and looked and we went from, um, six staff in our ELL program back in 1718 and now we're up to 11. So as the numbers have doubled, we've almost doubled our staff and you guys have approved all those changes, um, and they're needed. And we're continuing to monitor those numbers, especially those newcomers, because again, they take a lot of resources and support to be able to serve them. And then I think the last thing I'll just point out, um, if you go to the last slide, it's just some of the barriers that the teachers talked about. And one is just the transient students of coming in and out and not knowing all the information on them and trying to figure out how to best serve them. Uh, I mentioned the newcomers and all the support they need. And then just figuring out how to use the resources best in the building to serve the different levels of students. Um, we've made a lot of changes to try to serve a lot of the kids at all levels because the sooner we can get them out of the program, then we can take those resources and put them somewhere else. Um, but it's an ongoing thing because we get new students pretty regularly. So last week, we had two newcomers that enrolled in the district. And when you have a newcomer, you've got to rearrange schedules and support and that's an ongoing thing for our staff. They do a great job, um, but it is an ongoing thing and, um, create some challenges. The only other thing to note is Northside's obviously new, um, in programming. Um, Ryan Kessler, Karn Bueno have done a great job over in that building in providing support to families. Um, they're serving around 25 students right now, um, in that building and staff's doing a really great job. So again, just wanted to share a brief update, kind of a summary of, of what we shared at the curriculum meeting. We'll continue to monitor these numbers and certainly keep you guys updated if there's things that we need or want to present.
Any questions for Todd or administration?
Yeah. Do we have any non-Spanish ELL students? And how would we serve those if we do?
We probably have, uh, three or four students. Um, you know, with our ELL staff, just, we have staff that don't speak Spanish, right? But they still have strategies and things they use to serve those students. I want to say we've had Russian, Chinese, um, students that we've served, um, in the building. And staff, like I said, you know, there's certain strategies and things they do to help support those kids, even though they can't speak the language. Um, but it's something we're able to do and we've done in the past quite a bit with students. It's very few. Most of our, our ELL program is Hispanic, Spanish speaking.
The, these ELL numbers, are these separate from the, like, the capacity and enrollment stuff we approved last week? Or are those included in the special education?
It's separate.
So is it something that, are we having open enrollment students come in? Are we going to have to look at limiting the number of ELL students we can open, enroll due to resource constraints? Can we do that?
No.
I'm not aware of that being a, an option. We can, we can, uh, we can limit enrollment in regular ed and special ed.
Your ELL counts as regular education students. Um, if you tried to limit based, on the basis of ELL, it would be considered discrimination. So they count as regular ed, general ed students.
Our ELL population, those are primarily living in the district, correct? They live in our district. We have to serve all children, including.
Yeah, I would say a very small number, if any, open enrollment. They're currently living in the district. Coming on the, I mean, I, I understand the, the support challenge that you're describing and, and it's also, I mean, just for me as a, as a community member, like, it's a, it's exciting to see. You know, like, we're, we're bringing new, new families and Monroe is becoming a more diverse community. And so I, I think it's, when I look at these numbers, I, I understand there's a lot of challenges on the support side, but there, there's also a lot of, a lot of assets and a lot of exciting elements to, you know, Monroe looking differently than it did 20 years ago. So appreciate all you guys are doing.
The next item on the agenda is an informational item. So it's a Wasbe Convention update. Anything you want to add from the Wasbe Convention before we open it up to board members to share anything they'd like?
Yeah, so this, uh, this is the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. It puts this on each year. It's a, it's, it's probably the biggest event in the state related to public schools. Um, so our owners rep, CG Schmidt, and PRA, we're all there as vendors. And then, of course, we had six board members and two administrators there. So we were able to, it's really professional development opportunities for board members and administrators to get together and talk about topics that are important within public education. So one of the areas, uh, that, that we've been looking at is, we've been looking at state funding and legislative actions in the state that impact public education. So a lot of the theme things, I know that I attended, um, we were talking about those in particular, things that had to do with vouchers, how it impacted public school districts. Uh, we had a collegial group that we got together because we're going to be working with some legislators in the future, including Senator Howard Markline. So we talked about some of that stuff. We talked about special education reimbursement rates, which are currently running about 30% of the cost. Um, we, we looked at, um, some of the other things that have been created because of the previous biennial budget, not having any state dollars in the budget, and then those dollars going away. So now we're two years behind, two big inflationary years behind to make sure that we have adequate funding to, to cover our costs. So different things like that. Um, the revenue limits and how significant it is, you know, I think not necessarily that revenue limits aren't necessary, but the revenue limits, especially as they've been used through Act 10, did not take into account a large inflationary trend that we just had. So those are things that we want to make sure that we, we can educate, um, our elected officials about so they know that. And then, of course, just the challenges around hiring and finding qualified educators. So, um, the pipeline is not full like it was maybe 10, 12 years ago, um, or sooner or late, longer than that. But, um, it's just the opposite. There's, there's a trickle. And, uh, it's a great way to make a living. It's a, it's a really rewarding profession. And there's a lot of, uh, it's, and it's a, just a wonderful, wonderful way to get to know people and help other people grow. So, but those are just some of those things. So I don't know if some of the board wanted to share some of the things they went to. I will tell you about one of the sessions I did go to that was not in that vein. I went to a session that was put on by the, uh, the National Debate Group. And it was, Nina had their forensics team there. And, uh, they talked specifically about all the advantages of being involved in forensics and having to basically research and study a topic to be able to debate it one side or the other. And, and basically do that within a structure, you know, working on your listening skills, your research skills, your ability to, to have a discussion in real time, uh, with another person that you have a differing opinion with. And, and I think about our own forensics teams and our team, forensics teams here are pretty rock solid. So it was, it was a pretty good, uh, pretty good thing to go listen to. And I want to take on Nina. So.
Yeah. Um, so, uh, board members that participated in the Wasbe Convention, if there's anything that you wanted to share, uh, from the sessions that you attended or anything that you wanted to highlight that, uh, you thought was interesting to bring back? Ask for those now. Go for it, Terry.
I, I thought it was a really good conference. Um, I attended the Wasbe Superintendent Evaluation System, which we're switching to because I thought that would be good since we were changing to that. I also attended the Marquette Law School, which did a survey. They do it every year on the Wisconsin Public Opinion Poll about how public schools are doing in the state of Wisconsin. It was also a lot of good information. I also attended the Title IX, which there'd be updates to that in March of this year is when they're supposed to take effect. And, um, I also attended the Basic Business Finance as well. And then the keynote speaker and the, you know, the general sessions and stuff. But I thought it was a very useful conference, especially for a new board member. Um, I really enjoyed it. I learned a lot. I had a lot of questions that at lunch, like on the finance that. I learned a lot, had a lot of questions that at lunch, like on the finance that I asked Ron, questions that I asked you, Rich, and Fig, from learning things at these different sessions. So highly recommend it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit. I, I did career readiness, challenges to curriculum, not letting students face trauma alone. Then I was in the delegate session as well. And I think each year when I go, there's always really awesome aha moments. But also, I think this year, as I was reflecting on the ones that I chose, our, our admin team, our teachers could have been teaching some of it. And that was really exciting. Like, I was, I was listening to the work that they're doing in the career readiness. And I, I was thinking about SOAR and Launch and all that, the movement that we're having. And then just, you know, the, the not letting students face trauma alone. Joe, all the work we've done in the mental health spaces. And it's just made me very proud to know that I don't feel like we're missing anything, right? Some years I've gone, I've been like, oh, we should be doing that. I didn't leave with that feeling this year, which was really great. But yeah, it's always a terrific, it's always a terrific conference to go to, and it's worth the time.
I would agree with Nikki. I mean, it was a great conference, you know. It's not my first time, but I go back because it's rewarding. You know, with all the breakout sessions, a couple that I highlighted were operating referendums. It struck me that in 2024, there's projected to be 100 districts in the state that will have operating referendums that provide 10% or more of their revenue limit, and that's a lot. And so, you know, the state funding dilemma that we have is, is just being compounded. And I think we're feeling it statewide. And the last two years, I think, a number of districts, probably us included, plugged holes with COVID federal dollars. So that was really eye-opening. And I think the other one I highlighted here was challenges facing districts in curriculum and library materials. And, you know, some of this has been in the press, and it's about textbooks and books in the library and the balance between free speech and what's appropriate. And, you know, that's a real thing. Some districts are struggling with it. I don't think we have yet, but I think we need to be prepared if that would come our way. So again, it was a great conference. Glad I went.
I, and I can talk, too. I, I would agree. I went to some of the same ones that Terry went to that she talked about, specifically about the new district administrator evaluation process that WASBE is developing that we'll be using in the Marquette survey and poll, which was always interesting. And also a great session on what a couple of districts are doing that's unique in ways that they are celebrating and recognizing their teachers and staff. And so some really creative, neat ideas that some of the districts are doing that have, that were, that were pretty inspiring. And I also went to using data in our board meetings and how do, how do districts use data? And how should we be using data? And again, similar to Nikki, it makes me proud that we're really moving to do a lot of that in our, in our district, right? They're talking about, you know, probably half of our board meetings should be sent, spent reviewing and looking at data and using data to make decisions. And I feel like that's, that's where we're going. And so that's great you guys are doing. It's exciting to know that we're doing such great work.
Anything you want to share, Kelly?
Um, most of the sessions that I went to were already spoken about. We did go to the Focus on Energy one to kind of learn about what they had to offer. It sounds like Rich has a pretty good relationship with the Focus on Energy rep across already, so that's, that's good to hear. But yeah, I went to the, the operating referendum one as well and the Marquette poll one. Kind of connect in some way. But yeah, that's about it.
Yeah, I would agree with what Teresa and Nikki had mentioned. Going to the convention, you get an opportunity to get a little bit of perspective about the hard work that goes on in our district. And because otherwise, this is the only experience that we have, right? This is, this is the way that we're exposed to. And going to that venue and going to the presentations and talking to other board members, you get a feel for the things that they're dealing with or working through or working towards in their own districts. And you feel a little less isolated. You feel a little bit better about where we are, a little more inspired when you're done. I, too, went to some of the same ones that Terry went to, the Marquette Law Poll. That one was pretty interesting. It dealt with the public sentiment regarding funding public education versus taxes. So they have a study that's been repeated for 12, the last 12 years, charting the sentiment over time. That was pretty, a pretty good view into, you know, what some of those 100 operating referendums are, are going to be up against here in, in 2024. Another one that I went to was about redefining ready. That one was actually put on by Beloit. This is a return. They were there last year, and then they brought an update this year. They're using WISE-Local, which is a data warehousing system that pulls in information from, it used to be called Career Cruising, now it's called Zello. So all of our kids are supposed to be exposed to that platform as they move through middle school and into high school to help them determine what career they may be interested in. So information that goes into Zello, information that goes into Skyward, information that goes into other systems that our administrative professional support staff are already putting information into. WISE-Local will reach in, pull that stuff out to prevent them from having to dual and triple enter this information and then visualize it in a way that is meaningful to the board. And what was most interesting to me was meaningful to students and their families so that they can start to understand, you know, what does it mean to be life-ready? What does it mean to be career-ready? What does it mean to be college-ready? What are the, the leading indicators? And how am I doing? How's my child doing? And they, they had a whole portion of their presentation that was geared towards personalizing communications for those students so that when landmark events in that journey are occurring, students get a version of information that's applicable to them. The parents get one as well that's tailored to their child. It was really interesting to see what they've, how they continue to evolve that capability there, so. Well worth going, and I'm excited that six of us were able to make it this time and encourage everybody who's able to go to check it out next time. All right, anything additional before we move on?
Okay, we're on to informational items. So boardsmanship and administration on the boardsmanship side. So I reached out to our WASBE rep, George, who's going to, I was blanking his last name, but George is going to be the proctor for our professional development for the new superintendent evaluation framework. Based on his availability and the availability from folks that filled out the doodle poll, looks like the 8th of February from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Works best for the majority of the individuals that participated in the poll. So I have confirmed that with him. For some reason, you can't make Thursday, February 8th, 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. Let me know. We'll see if we can make other arrangements for him to do a breakout session with folks who can't make it. But it'll be an opportunity for the board to work together towards that common goal and framework. And then I also have, it is eureka season, so there are finale pitches over at Abe Lincoln. Ms. Butler, I believe, sent an email out to the board looking for executive producers from the board to come check out the work that those kids are doing there. So if you're able and willing, that's on the 29th of January and/or the 30th of January. It's only one hour from 12:15 to 1:15. I did it last year. Yeah, I think it was last year. And it's fun. Kids get excited. It's almost like a, kind of like a Shark Tank kind of thing going on, so.
Do we have to destroy any careers or?
Start careers, Phil, start careers.
I think the stakes are lower. All right, anything from administration?
No, nothing.
All right. So we are on to Board of Education correspondence. I do not have any outstanding correspondence that was not responded to committee reports. Ruby, do you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, just a couple things. So like I mentioned in our last meeting, Cover Pennies was on Sunday, the 14th. And it was a slower year. We definitely were on the tail end of that weather. And just, we heard from a couple of people that their drives had, like, doubled in time. So we were expecting a slower, a slower crowd. We did end up raising $3,005. And this is between the dress sales and the raffle donations, well, the raffle ticket sales, and then just any donations that people felt like giving. And again, all of that money is going to Jacob Swag. And then also, I heard back from the music department about the Holiday Extravaganza, which raised over $10,000. And again, this money was from ticket sales and then the bake sale, and then we had just open donations. And some, so some of the proceeds are going to go towards the musical, which is Addams Family this year. Some is going to just regular costs, like purchasing music, repairing instruments, stuff like that. And then everything else is going to start an arts booster club in Monroe, which I think is pretty exciting. So thank you to everybody who came and supported. All that money is very helpful to music, so.
Terry?
Nothing.
Phil? Finance committee met this evening before BOE meeting reviewed monthly financials.
All right, Teresa?
Curriculum will meet February 12th before our next board meeting.
Okay. Mike?
Not really committee report, but I happened to run into the students that, from the theater program that went up to the Overture Center for Musical this past weekend. I think it was awesome to see as many kids as went up there go and see and participate in the arts. So again, awesome theater program. Good job, Jen, on that.
Dylan?
Nothing.
Nikki? Okay, items for future discussion from board members? I do not have requests from the liaison reports. We have five minutes for the press. Adam, if you have questions?
Yeah, I don't want to take away those guys' thunder for Wednesday, but any chance I could get a, any fresh rendering or even a graphic sheet or something for Wednesday's paper to kind of prep people and maybe get people that weren't watching tonight to tune in on Wednesday?
So what specifically did you want for a picture?
Uh, I mean, it could be something as simple as that first visual of the front of entrance and the building or the overlook of the 2D view of the comments in the first floor, something like that.
You need that tonight, though, correct?
That would be...
So Jen, you didn't get anything to unload off of that thumb drive, did you? Shoot. So, um, so he did not, we don't have that electronic file, which is why we had to have him come up here and use his laptop. What we do have is we do have the PDF that Jesse used for the site plan. Would that be helpful?
That, more than nothing.
Yeah, I just, you know, so, I mean, I mean, the, the, the whole part of this is everybody has been just moving like crazy to get here. So we were, if you couldn't tell, panicking a little bit when we were going to have some tech difficulties because we were hoping to be able to do this ahead of time. Just see if I can. That is not it, sweet. This is it.
We will certainly see what we can get you ahead of time.
I'm going to, if I can get this, I got this to open, I'm going to send this to you, okay?
Okay, we'll, we'll reach out to him and see if, maybe even just the first couple of slides from his PowerPoint. I'm sure the, the renders are probably what was so large in the file.
Oh, that's true, sure.
Okay, we'll get you what we can, for sure.
Worst case scenario, I think I got one that kind of pointed together screen, so I could maybe make it that, too.
Sure.
Okay, Adam, I, I got you at editor, so.
All right. Okay, so we do have a closed session this evening. We won't be taking any action coming out of closed session. And we're going to continue to discuss negotiations with BNS, work on the administrator's evaluation, and continue discussion around staffing levels for the 24, 25 school year that I provided some color and context around at our last meeting. So with that, I am entertaining a motion to move into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Part N1, Part C and E for the purposes of discussing 24, 25 staffing, district administrator's evaluation, and the purchase of the BNS property at 9:29.
Agreed.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Terry. Nikki, would you call a roll, please?
Yep, Nikki Austin, yes. Jim Curran?
Yes.
Mitch DePry?
Yes.
Eric Eckball?
Yes.
Mike Franzus?
Yes.
Teri Sakeen? Yes. Dylan McGuire?
Yes.
Terry Montgomery? Yes. Phil Vasper?
Yes.
We will...
Do you need any other information?